Good morning, everybody, and welcome to the June 12, 2025 Board of Selectmen meeting. And as always, we'll start the meeting with the pledge and also followed by a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. If you could just remain standing for a second, we'd like to remember Dick Burke Strasser, who was a former first selectman who served from 2001 to 2003. He was also on the RTM for 17 years, a good guy. And he wasn't doing well for a few years, and he passed away a week or two ago. So we want to remember Dick and his wife and family.
All righty, is there a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of May 22, 2025?
Lauren Raven, so moved.
Janet Stone-McWiggin, I second.
Hold those in favor. Fred Camilloza, yes.
Lauren Raven, yes.
Janet Stone-McWiggin, yes.
Okay, thank you. All righty. Going on to the first selectments updates, not too many. We will have the Filipino flag raising tomorrow, I think, at 8:00.
Yes, 8:00.
It's in early.
They told me 8:00 this morning.
Yeah, and I think breakfast is at 8:30.
Yes. They'll be setting up a breakfast here in the town hall meeting room, but not cooking, for the record. Anyone who wants to come is invited.
Okay. Thanks. Thanks, Ken. And just the new business announcements, we stopped by the Stretch Lab, and we did an opening there. That was a couple days ago. They're over in the shopping center. We're Stop &amp; Shop in Greenwich. So if you're in need of a stretch, those guys are good. They're really good. I know as we get older, that's an important thing. It's just as important as lifting and running. On Monday, June 16, Janet's probably going to mention this, I'll mention it twice, the Stop Food Waste is going to be having the Stop Food Waste is the event.
Is the proclamation?
Proclamation. And Waste Feed Greenwich and the Sustainability Committee and all of our environmental advocates will be there. That's at 10:00 here. Tuesday, June 16.
It's at Holly Hill.
Oh, it's at Holly Hill.
But there's limited space, just so you know. So if people are interested in coming, they should RSVP.
And it'll be around the back where the food scraps are, I believe. On the 17th, I'm going to stop by Last Day of School for the North Mayans Schools 100th Anniversary, a second time. They had it a couple weeks ago, but I was in Fort Bragg, so I get a second shot at that one. Also, on the 17th, we're having the GHS graduation, so that's at 5:00. You always remember the day you're, you know, you don't remember much about the graduation, but you remember the date. What was ours, Lauren? June what? Don't fail me here. I'll give you a hint, it's within three days.
The 20th.
Yes, okay. All right.
I had to think, and I was just saying how much I was getting rid of old stuff, so.
Exactly.
I'll wait till my turn.
On the 18th, and we're doing another Byram Greenway Trails Walk. And also, Henry Rothenberg will be first selectman for a day, starting at 2:00. So if you have any complaints for me, we keep them for that day at 2:00. On the 19th, Keith Hirsch, our old friend Keith Hirsch, who's retiring in a couple days after a long career with GPD, we're going to swear him in at 1:00 as a special. So we're glad Keith is staying put here in Greenwich. Also, on the 19th, at 12:00, an hour before that, is the June 19 celebration, so just a word about that. Greenwich was the first, I believe, in the state, we've been told, to do that a few years ago. So that's, and it's a really nice event. It's something that Bobby Walker, a Greenwich resident, would say when he grew up in Texas, that was a big thing. But, you know, when we did it, I never heard of it. So that was pretty cool to see people come here and celebrate that and learn a little bit about the history of it. So we thank Bobby for that. On the 23rd, we're doing Safety Town again. Janet and Lauren will probably be there at 10:00. And then on the 26th, we're doing a ribbon cutting for PAUSE Greenwich, P-A-U-S-E, not P-A-W-S, Greenwich. So the new businesses keep coming here, so we're excited about that. And with that, I'll turn it over to Lauren.
Thanks, Fred. I was saying, I should remember the graduation. I was just telling the audience that I'm in search of something in my house, so I've been looking at a lot of, like, old things that I've saved. So I have my report cards from Central Junior High. I had the bottle of wine with everybody's signature. It was, the drinking age was 18 back then, and I was already 18.
What was your GPA?
That I am not sharing. I think I shredded that material.
It was probably better than mine.
I am going to miss the graduation ceremony because I'm actually leaving to go on vacation Tuesday morning. So Sarah, congratulations on your graduation. It'll be the first one I've missed since being on the Board of Education 2015, 2016. So I'll be sad to miss it, but I wish all of the graduates, not just of Greenwich High School, just everyone in Greenwich, just a wonderful graduation and start to your summer and start to the next chapter in your lives. Very exciting. With respect to some of the work that I'm involved in, I always talk about, I shouldn't say always, but I talk a lot about SNAP, the Selectment and Nomination Advisory Committee. We're wrapping our meetings for the summer. We're in excellent shape. We actually have no openings. We have a backlog of people still to interview, but we don't really have any openings, which is exciting to go into the summer with the team not having to necessarily ask people at barbecues and parties and things of that nature if they're willing to serve the town. And we thank everyone who is willing to serve the town. We had somewhat of a social gathering last night, and we just admired how many people that are willing to step up and be volunteers and, you know, make Greenwich it is, make Greenwich what it is. So that's my update. Thanks.
Thank you, Lauren. Good morning, Janet.
Good morning, and thank you. And yes, congratulations to all our high school graduates. Very exciting. I will thank Good Weather Thoughts. You should ask my mother-in-law if she remembers the day that you graduated. She was the chair of the Board of Vets at the time, and she individually signed all 900 diplomas, so I would imagine she remembers.
We still have her.
Thank you, Barbara.
Yeah, I still have it, too.
And yes, Juneteenth is next Thursday at noon here for a proclamation, and that's going to, and so, yeah, shout out to Bobby Walker, who chairs the Diversity Advisory Committee. That committee is organizing this event. And then on Saturday, the 21st, the Greenwich Historical Society is putting on a celebration, also starting at noon. And if it's anything like last year's, it's going to be fabulous, so definitely consider coming. Again, I'll thank Good Weather Thoughts. And Sunday, the 22nd, is Experience the Sound at Greenwich Point. Always a good day. Again, I'll hope for good weather, but do come out. It's, you know, a lot of organizations will be represented there. I think that there is a clam bar for people who are interested in shellfish, so definitely do come out. And then, and this is just, I think, adorable, but kind of serious. Tuesday, June 24, at 7:00 p.m. at Round Hill Community Church, the Sustainability Committee, Conservation Commission, and Friends of Benny Park are hosting a workshop called Turtle Rescue, sponsored by Turtle Haven. This is turtle mating season. We will see turtles on the road. You're laughing, but it's real. We want to, we want to save our turtles. And so the workshop will talk about the ABCs of how to handle turtles and how to be safe when you're trying to rescue the turtles. And that's it from me.
Thank you. As an animal lover, I don't mean to laugh, but it sounded funny.
You should, well, you should come.
I should. I like the turtles, too.
I inherited two turtles from a college student who used the wrong bulb for the thing, the aquarium that the turtles were in. And it almost made it look like a cigarette burn in the poor turtle's shell. And there are vets that care for turtles, and it's not cheap, but we cared for that turtle's shell.
Yeah, oh, God, I'm going to get this story wrong, but when I was in the legislature, there was a project on Route 7 in Norwalk, and they stopped the project because there was a turtle there that was on the endangered species. And it ended up costing the state millions of dollars to reroute everything. And I mean, I think there was a much easier resolution to it, to save the turtle and not do that, but whatever. But, yeah, I remember Larry Caffaro getting up on the, on the House floor and giving the story there, and he had everybody in stitches, but it was, sadly, it was true. So anyway, yeah, so we're going to go on to old business, but again, Sarah, thank you for interning, and good luck to you at Harvard, and we're very, very proud of you, and we're happy to work with you. But come back and say hello. Okay, thank you. All right, going on to old business, we have the request to appoint the Historic District Commission as the study committee for a possible boundary extension for Strickland Road Local Historic District, and Andrew Malillo's here. And we did that, the first time we did that historic district was, what, 2016, 2018? When we did, when we put the sign up there for Strickland Road?
Yes. Andrew Malillo, Secretary to the HTC. Good morning. That's about, I think that's about right, but those aren't the same as what's happening here. The request here is to put the park parcel into the existing historic district, and that incorporates Mil Pond Court and Strickland Road. It was supposed to be in it in 1976. It got mixed up in something, and so now we're just trying to fix an old mistake.
So Mil Pond Court, and then where Mil Pond is and the little park there, would that park be included?
Yeah, that's the park, that's the parcel that we're seeking to include, or the applicant seeking to include. And then this is to appoint the HTC as the study committee, and a report will be crafted as to the merits.
Okay, and just one question, and I think it's a great idea. We always talk about, we've gone over there and cleaned it up and done some touches there, but we have always talked about enhancing the beauty of that little park there. Would something like this affect that? We're not talking about putting any buildings. We're talking about, you know, creating different sightlines and maybe different plantings. And, you know, we always had the idea of putting a water fountain in the middle of, with a circulator to help with the dredge, you know, the silt. But it'd be kind of really nice there for that area, but would this affect something like that?
No, it just would require if it goes through the HTC to review it and give it a certificate of appropriateness, so long as you're not building a Ferris wheel there. I'm sure it's, I'm sure it'll be reviewed in time.
Yeah.
And it is a cemetery there. So the iron gate that exists there now is a guess, but it's probably a little more organic than that neat square or rectangle.
And isn't there a cemetery over the pond, too, right over on Relay? I think there's a couple graves there.
Yeah, the Mead Cemetery's over there. And all this land was laid out in 1725 before the dam in 1763, so Strickland was still just a little brook there. So the land actually went farther back, so who knows what could have been there before.
And that was the main port of commerce for Greenwich, so that was a lot.
The Lower Landing, Brushy Point.
Yeah. There was a lot going on there a long time ago. Any questions?
I don't. Just thank you for your work.
Thank you.
Thank you, Andrew. Appreciate it. So this is a second read, so we'll.
Lauren Raven, I move that we approve the request to appoint the Historic District Commission as the study committee for a possible boundary extension for the Strickland Road Local Historic District.
Janet Stone-McWiggin, I second.
Hold those in favor. Fred Camilloza, yes.
Lauren Raven, yes.
Janet Stone-McWiggin, yes.
All right, thank you. Thanks, Andrew. Appreciate it. Going on to the second item is the update on the test pit work for Greenwich Avenue, work between Greek Street and Bruce Park Avenue. And I see two friends there coming up. I don't know who's going to go first.
Hi, how are you? I'm Ken Soucie, work for EverSource.
Hi, Ken.
Yeah, I'm the construction rep who's working on the project now with AJ Penna. Just want to let you know, we're in the process of breaking into our second structure. We're by Greek Street already, and we're in the next, in the coming weeks, by, I believe by Wednesday, we should be by the patron, the last patron that has the outdoor dining there. And hopefully, we'll be by that so they can have their setup for outside dining, so.
And shockingly, I haven't had any, we haven't had any calls.
Yeah.
I think this, this happy meeting we took, this compromise during a couple days, night, a couple days, day work.
Yes.
It gave people a little bit of a break, I think.
Yeah, we're certainly willing to adjust to everybody's schedules, and we're sensitive to the customers' needs, especially over there with the outdoor dining and everything like this. And so far, you know, even though we did face some challenges, we're moving in the right direction.
Well, Ken, we appreciate you coming back every two weeks, and Chris, thank you for all your work and always getting back immediately. You guys have been a pleasure to work with, and I don't know if anybody was.
I'm just going to echo the same thanks. Thanks for your flexibility. Also, thanks for the frequent check-ins, because I think together, you know, it really helps.
Mm-hmm. Do know.
Really works. So thank you so much to both of you.
Thank you.
Have a great day.
Thanks.
All right, going on to the third item, which is a discussion and option of the goals and objectives for the town of Greenwich budget priorities. And our town administrator and COO, Kate Bush, is here. Good morning, Kate.
Good morning.
How are you?
So I sent out to you something earlier this week with some proposed changes after a meeting I had with planning and zoning at your request. So if you want to delay the vote until another meeting, you know, I'm okay with that.
So I do remember seeing, I just assumed it was posted, but are you saying it's not, it wasn't posted?
When you say posted, I'm not sure what you mean. It did not come in your agenda packets, no?
Right, I know, but don't, don't, if we're, if we're voting on it, shouldn't it be in the public packets?
Well, I don't, well, so, okay, did not understand that. So then, I guess you're not going to vote on it today, but I wanted to run through what they were proposing and to, you know, see what other changes you might have.
Yeah, so, Lauren, I think what Janet was saying, usually we'll do a second read. We want the public to just take a look at it.
Okay.
So I think what we'll do is we'll give them a chance to post it, and then we'll just give them a chance. I'm sure it'll be fine, but.
Sure.
And I thought it was fine.
We can, we can still have the discussion today.
Well, I think you should, because.
Yes.
Because you may not agree with what they were proposing.
Yes.
So the first was rather minor. In the vision statement, they suggested changing, instead of referring in the last sentence to a connected environment, to a connected community, kind of going along with everything else. Probably the most significant change there, in terms of language, the very first goal, and this was taken directly from their POCD guidelines, that was originally to preserve the community's character and sense of place. Referring to the community's character has become problematic. Yep. People infer that that means something discriminatory. Yep. So they suggested preserve our community's historic architectural characteristics and sense of place. So, you know, I think that's, that's pretty good. It still gets to the same thing that, what we were actually trying to convey. They questioned under educational facilities, should we have something that refers to supporting the private educational facilities as well, since we do, are obligated, like, to provide busing, and we may be asked to support them through zoning changes or something. So I wasn't sure about that, and I think that's something you want to discuss.
I think the language on that, I think it's something we would, we want to do, but I think we have to be careful with the language and not, because it's not exactly the same as our support of the public school systems, I think.
Yes.
Yeah, I think it should be in there, but I just think we have to just work through the language.
Yeah.
Yeah, maybe it's more understanding that they're part of the, you know, educational ecosystem, you know, I don't know, making this up.
That's a good word.
Something along those lines, that they're, they have a place within the town.
Yeah. Okay, we'll work on probable language. They suggested that we include a statement about promoting energy efficiency in all town building projects. Under economic vitality, to something to say that we want to attract a broad spectrum of businesses, that, you know, we don't want to be, you know, all nail salons and banks, right? And then they also suggested we put something in there about mitigating riverine and coastal flooding. I think I referred to it as ocean flooding in here, but change that to coastal flooding. And they also asked that we insert something about resiliency. So those are where the proposed changes are. And I don't know if you all have any proposed changes.
No, I think you and I went over, you know, adding about the budgetary priorities that that's in there, which is great. These are great changes, because it's what we're doing already. And as far as the architectural, I call it architectural consistency, whenever I'm debating or testifying up there. I'll sometimes only use the word character, because, you know, I try to get it in there that it's not what they say it is, but I'll also add architectural consistency, so they, all doubt is removed. But I think having it in here like that, it just, you know, it avoids an issue where somebody could just take a shot at it. But it means the same thing, which we all agree, I think.
The only thing that struck me, and I know when we were trying to put the KPIs together, we always got stuck on, like, the sixth, the sixth section, is the unevenness of the bullets within each.
Yes.
And it makes me think that one might be more important than the other, and I don't think that that's what we want to convey. So when I look at, and I'm not against sustaining and improving our natural landscape and environment, but it's got one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight bullets. Is there a way to wordsmith some of that?
Sure.
So just visually, it doesn't look like it's the most important thing, even though I don't disagree that it's important?
I'll look at how I can combine them, yeah.
Because some of it was a little redundant, too.
Yeah, okay. Yep.
I'm great with it. I think, you know, thank you for all the thought and sensitivity that's going into this. I mean, you've really, you've really worked on this, obviously. I know that our P&amp;Z has really grappled with these issues for a very long time. So again, I just want, I want to make sure that we post this so that the public has a chance to look it over, but I am very much in favor of it.
Yeah, so what we'll do, Kate, is we'll, we'll just have this posted, and then we'll vote on it in two weeks. But I want to especially thank you for putting in a lot of time here and coming up with this, because you're putting together what we've been doing, what we're saying we're going to try and do and continue to do, but you're putting it down in a document, and it kind of fits in, and P&amp;Z loved it. That's why they reached out and said, maybe we can work on this and include, include it. So I think it really hit on all cylinders, so thank you for doing it.
You're welcome. I think it will help with the budget preparation in the future, particularly the capital budget, to see how the projects that people are proposing support the town's goals and objectives. And then, you know, I want to take it further at a certain point where departments will have their own goals and objectives that tie up to this. I mean, not that they already don't already, they do a good job of that, but tie things into this so you can, you know, kind of unify the structure.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate it. All righty. Going on to the last item on new business, is Tony Johnson online?
Yes.
Can we?
Yes, Tony, you are good to go.
Yes.
Great.
Great. Thanks for, again, having me this morning. Good morning.
Good morning, Tony.
Yes, it's a second read for the request that I've made to rename the current street that's known as Armstrong Court, again, Armstrong Court property, to be renamed after Sam Romeo, the chairman of the Housing Authority and a great patron of Greenwich, Connecticut. And I just think it's a wonderful honor, and we've gotten a lot of feedback from our residents, especially the senior community, who thinks it would be a wonderful honor for Sam and to honor his efforts and his abilities to get things done within town, especially for the Housing Authority since he's been on the board.
Well, we thank you, Tony, for suggesting it, and it's a great honor. There's not many streets or buildings or parks named after people in our town of 67 square miles, so, and a town that dates back to 1640. So Sam certainly has won his place in our town's history, so it's a great idea. And we're following our own naming policy, and I see the chairman of the Land Use Committee, the RTM, is here, Dan Quigley. And I know they took a look at it to give us some advisory comments, so, Mr. Chairman, floor is yours.
Chairman, different Mr. Chairman.
Different Mr. Chairman.
First time appearing before the Board of Selectmen, so this is an honor for me. Yes, so the Land Use Committee was asked by the Board of Selectmen for an advisory opinion on the renaming of the internal street in Armstrong Court to honor Sam Romeo, the head of Greenwich Communities, for his role in the redevelopment of Armstrong Court. The street is not a public road, which made this an honorary designation. Within the committee, there was no objections raised at all. Members expressed broad support for the honorary designation, and we all viewed it as a fitting and appropriate tribute to Mr. Romeo, and that it was distinct from any concerns that could be associated with renaming a public street, which obviously are more complex. We were not required to vote on this, but it was clear that there was unanimous support from all the members in the LUC, and everybody seemed very enthusiastic about it, and they supported it.
Well, thank you. And you were the first, you're the inaugural test here for our new naming policy, sending something to the RTM.
That's it. Looking forward to Quigley Drive in another 40 years.
We're working on that. We're working on it. You just got to pick the spot, though.
Back by Steve Cohen's house.
That's right. Thank you. I got a place in Central Greenwich with a proposed, another statue I'm thinking about, and you know what I'm talking about.
Of course, of course.
But thank you, and thank you for your leadership on a lot of things here in town. It's greatly appreciated.
Of course, it's an honor to be here. Thank you, guys, for all the work you do.
Thank you, Dan.
Thanks, Dan.
Okay, so I guess we can, well, any comments?
No, I was just going to say, so I'm glad that Dan was here, because my question would have been, since we didn't have anything entered into our packets for public posting, you know, the feedback from Land Use Committee, because that is, that is part of our naming rights policy. So, so now it's entered into the record, all good.
Yeah, thank you. And it was, it was the first time, so I'm glad we've done it. So in the future, we, you know, it's, we'll know by memory now. Okay.
Is it Sam Romeo Way?
Yes.
Okay. Because it's not in our, it's, forget it. Lauren Raven, I motion that we approve the request to change the internal street name at Armstrong Court in the town of Greenwich to Sam Romeo Way.
Janet Stone-McWiggin, I second.
Hold those in favor. Fred Camilloza, yes.
Lauren Raven, yes.
Janet Stone-McWiggin, yes.
Okay. Next up, Dan Quigley Drive. How's that?
I prefer Boulevard.
Oh, okay. All right.
We need a Raven Road first.
One at a time, one at a time. All right, thanks. Thank you, everybody. And no, great, thank you, Tony. Great honor for Sam.
I thank the board. We really appreciate that. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I think there is a stone street. Isn't there a stone street?
There is.
Stone Ave, Stone Ave.
Stone Ave.
Chickahominy.
Yes, Chickahominy, there is. I have a feeling it's about a stone quarry, though, and not, not Janet Stone.
Dream.
Never let the facts get in the way of a good story. It's Janet, named after Janet Stone-McWiggin. Okay, going on to new business, we have the request for a noise ordinance exemption for the parking lot maintenance.
Yeah, this is going, this item is going to be withdrawn, an alternate plan has been put forward that would not require the use of any leaf blowers, so there is no need for us to take action on this.
Okay, thank you, and thank Pete Krupeski for working on that. Next up is an approval, request for an approval of the Palmerance-Tuckman Open Space Resolution, and our friend Nancy Chapin of the Board of Parks and Rec is here. And Akash Gabor.
Yes, and I think graduate of '79, so I don't know, is that, we're all together, 1979? Eighty. Oh, you guys were babies.
Two thousand.
Okay. Oh, babies, babies, okay.
Kidding, kidding.
So here, Nancy Chapin on behalf of Board of Parks and Rec. And I'm just going to read the memo that's in your packet because it's pretty straightforward there, what the action is requesting. To designate, can everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
By the way, so nervous. I was saying I've been at this property for 20.
Turn around, there's like 300 people behind you.
Okay. To designate the Pomerance and Tuckman properties as official parkland under the inventory and management of Greenwich Parks and Recreation and to designate the Pomerance and Tuckman properties as preserved open space as defined by Connecticut State Statute, Section 12-107B3. So you've been given quite a lot of background information on this request. So I can be here to answer questions. This is a first read. If you have any questions about the packet, please let me know. But just briefly, the town acquired the Pomerance, Lolly Prince was selectman at the time, the Pomerance property in 2000. And at the time, it was put into the selectman's inventory. And then in 2007, the town acquired the Tuckman property, again, in the selectman's inventory. So now, 25 years later, the Parks and Rec Department has been maintaining these properties and we're looking for you to acknowledge that, let's get this in its proper place. Let the RTM vet the, the open space designation. If you have any questions about the legal aspects of the steps that we're going through, Dan Carlson, I believe, is on and he can answer those questions. If you have any questions about the park, the history, any tree, stone, you know, I've been in there over 60 years, so I can answer those questions. But we had, and I thank this board for supporting our master plan, the funding for that. And the BET did fund as well the master plans. We have this great master plan and in your packet. It's, I have a big, thick master plan, but I tried to pull out the summary pages that highlight. And this is the number one, you know, priority. And so, and I thought I might add, we had $100,000 cut from the budget. And the message was, this should be private funding. The only way we can get there is if we have this property designated as park and open space. We had a grant, we almost had, and we lost it because they're like, wait, there's no protection. What is this land? How's it going to be used? So we can't do any fundraising until we get there. So I think this is really important. As I said, I've been at this for 25 years, this property. Attended all of Lolly Prince's, you know, committee meetings. And so if anyone has any questions, if you want to walk the park, I love walking that park, just please feel free to reach out. And I think you should have, there's quite a number of Conservation Commission letter, very important. You know, we're advisory, we have a, you know, so in the advisory capacity, we, the board sent a letter as well. And then there's letters from many of the nonprofits in town, stakeholders, you know, people that feel it's really important. And we had, through the master plan process, we had many public meetings, surveys, and overwhelmingly support for this. So hopefully you will see that as well.
Yes, thank you so much. I think it's a hidden jewel. Most people in town don't know about it. Having grown up on, right across the street from it, I grew up on the property and worked there and had the honor. And your Lolly was the first selectwoman then and we were on the Parks Board. And I remember what we did, this was, we used to always have pay as you go and we stuck to that. This was the first time in Greenwich's history we did a modified pay as you go. We took out a five-year loan, paid it off quickly for two-thirds of it. And then Alma Tuckman had that last piece there, was a beautiful horse farm. And kids used to sleigh ride down the hill there. And we had so, so many great ideas there, but at the end of the day, some, some of the ideas are probably still valid. But we wanted to keep it in as natural state as possible with the, with the trails and everything. And it's just such a, it's such a jewel and people, and you said, you mentioned the history. Barbara Tuckman won a, was it the Pulitzer Prize?
The Pulitzer Prize, yeah.
For the Guns of August. She used to have this little chair that, a lift that would take her through the woods, up into the woods. And it was a treehouse and that's where she did her writing and she'd look out over everything. She was a very nice lady, very serious. I remember her husband was a doctor and then the, Mr. Wertheim, they were all related, had the first seat on the stock exchange.
Maurice, yes, Maurice. So Maurice Wertheim, so what people, people know it as the Seton property, but the Setons were really only there for about 10, 12 years. The Wertheim family and heirs have been there over 100. So people think about that. And so the history, so you have Wertheim, Maurice Wertheim and.
Ralph, Ralph Pomerance.
Worth had three daughters and one became a Pomerance, one Barbara Tuckman. Our family was very close to the Tuckman family and still are, but.
Do you remember growing up, we, we always said it was Pomerance.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
They got the credit for it. It was always Pomerance.
Pomerance, yes, yes, yes. It's really, you know, Wertheim.
Taking us back.
Yes. Oh, my gosh, you know, what we, my life in those woods. You know, and I just thought I'd add to, I was actually on the RTM at the time. We were making this purchase and there was a lot of talk about what, you know, should we buy it? And one of the things that came out was, were it to be developed, we would have needed new schools, new, you know, the cost to the town to get that developed, if were it to be developed, because it was, you know, quarter acre zoning or less, you know, could have been. And the thing that I like to share, it's really in a water course. And as we know, Koskob floods and it's acting like a sponge. And there's old growth trees, where's my tree conservancy here? They're talking about that all the time, that these old trees, they're the ones that soak up that water. They give us the air we breathe. And anyway, I could talk for hours about this property.
It's your backyard.
It's my backyard, yeah, exactly, exactly.
Well, preserving our open space is part of our mission.
Yes, exactly. It's all in the P O C D. So, and in your packet, you'll see, it's pretty clearly, you know, showing that this is hitting all the points of the P O C D. So, well, thank you.
I think you have three fans up here, so.
Absolutely, absolutely. I will.
Thank you.
I was going to say, I want to thank you and I will happily take you up on your offer to go for a walk. And even, even more than supporting our P O C D, it supports our 2019 open space plan.
Yep.
Because, I mean, Greenwich is really fortunate that we have the natural spaces that we do, but we need more. And I don't, I think people are not aware that even the spaces that we do have are not necessarily protected. So this is a huge step forward.
Yeah, I think so, too.
Thank you for your advocacy.
You know, you, the three of you will be recognized as the group that gets this done, like Greenwich Point, 1947, right?
Thank you.
For the record, that was in us in 47.
We're having a lot of fun today. It's nice.
Yes, I know.
Dan Carlson is online if there's any questions for him, or if not, we can let him go. Dan Carlson's online if we have any questions for him.
I have no questions.
Let him go.
Okay, Dan.
Thanks, Dan.
No questions. Thank, thank you, Dan.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, that's great. We'll, we'll see you in two weeks on this. We're looking forward to that. Next up is our friend Paul DeBari of the Board of Ethics. A request for consideration of town policy on referrals and recommendations. And there's no more thorough German to town than Paul DeBari. Thanks, Paul. Good morning.
Good morning and thank you again for considering this. We talked about it back in December and I take the blame for holidays and trips and being sick and stuff. Just kind of didn't get around to it until now. But it's like with the policy, we thought, you know, burying a recommendation on the page seven of an 11-page report would get your attention. But once we made that mistake twice, we decided it's time to come in and visit you. Did you want to do the?
It's up to you. I'm ready to do it if you want to do it.
Yeah, go ahead. Yeah. I put a little PowerPoint together. I thought just because it's been fits and starts, it would be good on the first reading to just summarize what's been going on. So.
They are up here, so, then when you want me to change pages.
Okay, we'll go to the next page. That's the cover. I'm going to go through the background of how we got to the policy and, and what, what the board did to come up with the policy. And then talk about the basic policy and the exceptions and how it would be administered. So the history is, starting with you, we had a discussion with the first selectman at one of our meetings. There's a little bit of overlap between making recommendations and the code of ethics because to some extent, it is covered by the code of ethics. You can't make recommendations that relate to something you have a private interest in. On the other hand, there are other situations where that's, I would say, most of the town directors think it's advisable just not to make recommendations. So we agreed to look into it and we interviewed 17 of the key department heads and found out that there were a lot of exceptions. So we were very careful to try to, you know, incorporate those properly. We found a lot of support for the idea that we do need a policy. There was a general sense that there was an unwritten policy, that you never make, you know, referrals or recommendations. And that, in fact, was confusing because people thought that was the general policy, but then they'd see all these exceptions being made, so they didn't know what was going on. So a lot of the directors said, I'd like to have a written policy, but obviously the written policy has to take the exceptions into account. So we, you know, we compiled our results, we shared them with the people we interviewed. We then put together a draft policy, we sent it around to everyone. We had a, you know, a Zoom call with whoever wanted, you know, we invited everybody to participate and got their comments and feedbacks. And then we came up with a final policy that we recommended to the selectmen. And we recommended it in, you know, 2023 and, you know, it didn't get noticed. And we did it again in 2024. But, you know, once, once we'd made the mistake twice, we figured we better come in and see you. So we did and now we're here. Thank you very much. The basic policy is that it is the general policy of the town of Greenwich not to make referrals or recommendations with respect to providers of goods and services. But there is one major exception for emergencies and we didn't want to define that carefully. Because if you have an emergency, you don't want to be wondering, is this an emergency or not? You just want to take care of it. And we felt that, yeah, okay, everybody who fails to follow the policy is going to say, I had an emergency. But you can figure out later whether that's the case. Take care of the emergency and then we'll figure out whether you're justified or not. And if there's a couple of people that slide through with that excuse, it's probably good because it makes people feel more comfortable taking action rather than doing something else. So we just basically said, if there's an emergency, the policy is off. And we also identified a number of specific additional exceptions that we thought were worthwhile to note. And the first one are authorized agents and service providers. So for example, the Parks Department has qualified vendors, you know, at the town docks and things. They have to make sure that the people know what they're doing. But on the other hand, they're for private users only. So what they've done is come up with a list, they have a qualification procedure. People are on an equal footing in terms of qualifying for that. They've published the list. And so we basically incorporated that kind of process into that exception. If you, if you follow those, if you set up proper criteria and you, and you qualify people, then you're okay to make recommendations and referrals on that list. The other one is resource referrals. This is, is a kind of referral and recommendation, it's not really a referral or recommend. But what happens is, there are times when town officers have special capabilities that private people need to use. So the town actually accommodates them and usually charges them for it. The obvious example is the side job policy that the police department has. And they've done a wonderful job, you know, in terms of having a very well-articulated policy and a procedure for allocating who, who gets the side jobs and so forth. So we basically copied that policy and incorporated that into the overall policy as an exception. If you, if you have a, you know, a procedure for allocating resources of the town to other people, as long as it's supervised by the department head, that's fine. Another situation where you need to make exception are listings. And listings are basically things like the health department, when they had COVID, they had to give a list of where you could go get vaccines. So they provided a listing, you know, it was, it doesn't have to be comprehensive, but it wasn't partial in any event. And there are other situations, the, the Commission on Aging prints out a resource guide and they list all the places that seniors might need to go to get services. So that's another form of listing. So we sort of, we talked to Lori Contadino and, you know, we, we came up with a, an approach that allows people to have listings. And the same thing goes true with sponsorships and information sessions and things like that. There's a sort of an implicit referral or recommendation when you bring somebody up and say to their. But, you know, we said, as long as you make it clear that the circumstances, the town isn't really endorsing this person or just putting them in for educational or informational purposes, that's okay. So the last thing we call purely personal. Basically, you're a town employee, you're having dinner with your cousin and the cousin says, I need help, you know, getting a, choosing a service provider or something and you work with them on a town. Can you make a recommendation? Oh, no, I can't do that. And they'll say, come on, you're my cousin, you can tell me. He says, listen, this is my own personal recommendation. It's not the town's recommendation. Okay, you can do it. So we just said, if, if you make it clear that it's a personal recommendation and not a recommendation of the town, we'll let you, you know, do that.
So Paul, so, and I can, so that's interesting. Okay, good. Because I know when I was in the legislature, my first year up there, my legislative, she, she heard me. Somebody had called that I knew really well and they were asking for an attorney. And I said, oh, yeah, call so-and-so or this one. And she said, do not ever do that again because that's steering. So that, I couldn't do it up there. So here, I always tell people, look, if you know a lawyer or whatever, you know, because that's usually the first one, but I, I'm not allowed to give it up. But, but you're saying here, we could say, personally, I've used, you know, Smith-Rentson, but that's not a town opinion, not a town recommendation. So we could do it as long as we clarify.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, I just wanted, yeah, because I, I've been staying clear of it only because of my experience up there. And sometimes people get, most people don't, they understand. Some people get a little annoyed saying, I grew up with you and you can't tell me? And I would say, no, I could get in trouble by steering business. But I'm glad for this clarification because we could say, it's my own personal experience, recommendation, recommendation from, based on personal experience, but not a town endorsement.
Yeah, what a lot of the directors told us is that, you know, the, the problem is, people push you and push you to give a recommendation. You finally, somebody slips up and gives them a recommendation, then they're unhappy with it and they come back and say, it's the town's fault. So, you know, you can't win.
So you take it on yourself.
The purpose of having a policy isn't because you expect everybody to follow it and refer to it every 10 seconds. It's to have it in the file. So when something happens, you could say, that wasn't our policy. And you can hold people accountable for training people towards it and making people aware of it. That's really what it is. So when we put in administration, we just said, it's up to the department heads to set, you know, to set the procedures that they use to implement this policy. And just leave everybody to, you know, sort of keep it at a lower level, on the radar screen, but that's it, so.
That's, and our town attorney wants to.
I'm listening to this. I think it's all fine. I would just. I just wanted to make the suggestion that if you do that and it is a personal recommendation, follow it up with an email. Just make sure that it's in writing so that it's clear.
And also reference that you are following town policy.
Right, right. I think, just, you know, again, so it doesn't come back to bite anybody later on.
I can say there is a town policy against it. This is only my personal.
Right, and put it in writing is a, is a definitely a good idea. Okay, this is cover everybody. Thank you.
The way we describe that is, of course, there's, there's federal and state regulations that also apply. And so even with, it's a purely personal rec, you may not be able to do it, say, under Medicare. People at Withersall can't even give their own personal opinion. So we, we, subject to that, we said, you can make a, as long as the following conditions are met. Circumstances under which the recommendation, make it clear it's not a referral or recommendation by the town. Where it's made in the course of town employment or under other circumstances where the town might be considered to have authorized a recommendation, care must be taken to document that a clear disclaimer has been given to the recommendation expresses only a personal view and should not be considered authorized. But that, that's what you were saying. And compensation received from making such personal recommendations unrelated to the town representative's work or responsibilities for the town and specifically approved by the supervisor in writing.
Okay, thank you.
So, any other questions?
No, so we'll, this is the first read, so we'll, we'll, you know, reflect any questions, comments that we get in the next two weeks. But I think this is extremely helpful and I'm glad, I thank you for doing this. I know it's a lot of work interviewing all those people. But it's just, when we spoke a few years ago, I just was worried because people, over the years, would ask me, how come so-and-so gets all these jobs and are, and they would start to make things up in their heads that, you know, their minds that, well, everybody's referring this, it wasn't usually the case. But that, that particular contractor may have been one of the few people that could perform the work. But people in the public's, the perception in the public was that people here were favoring certain. So that's the reason we brought this all up. So this is extremely helpful. the reason we brought this all up, so this is extremely helpful.
Good, good. Well, thank you for your time.
I just, I just want to echo the, the thanks. We are so lucky that we have the Board of Ethics that we do. You five members are so smart and so experienced, and this is clearly a very thoughtful and thorough policy, so, and it, it really helps, right, to be able to refer to something in writing that we can then, you know, advise our own committees, this is, this is what you need to follow, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I echo the thanks, and it was great to meet, and it does seem like just, it was yesterday, but I guess, was it in, was it like in December or January?
December, yeah.
Yeah, and I'm going to reach out to Mary Pepe. So, we do town trainings all the time, so I'm going to have this, have HR explain this at the next go-around.
Well, and we also, I mean, we need to do this for our committees as well.
Yeah.
I mean, right now, right now, I think that when people are interviewing for a nomination, we have it on the form, will you, will you sign the ethics code? But this is, this is, this goes one step further. This is really for committee and commission and board chairs, I think, to be aware of it.
Yeah. Okay. No, thank you, so we'll see you in two weeks. Thank you. Thank you, Paul. Okay, thank you so much. So, we have one more item, which is the request to change the date of the June 26 meeting, Board of Selectmen, to June 25th. Do we have a time for the June 25th?
Yes, it will be. It will be 7:00. It's going to be entirely a Zoom meeting, but, so, everyone can stay home except for me, because I'll be here monitoring the Zoom, but, yes, 7:00 Zoom.
Okay, is 7:00 okay for everybody, or does everybody want earlier?
Can I have it earlier?
I, I can do it early, could you?
No, you can't.
Oh, you can't? Oh, I thought you wanted it.
No, because I'm 13 hours ahead of you, so if you did it at, when you wanted to do it, 5:00 PM, that's 6:00 AM to me, and I'm on vacation.
That's a big deal. All right.
We might, we might want to try to squeeze in an interview, too, because there is somebody that's interviewing that works during the day, and he could only interview at night for our Fair Rent Commission, so might try to squeeze that in, too.
Okay. That's, I'm okay. Thank you.
I'm fine with that, yeah.
Thanks, everybody, and that, so is there a motion?
Lauren Raven, I motion that we approve the requ, I move that we, oh, whatever, that we, I'm so tired today. I motion that we approve, I, you know what I'm trying to say.
The change, the date change of the June 26 meeting, Board of Selectmen to June 25th, via Zoom at 7:00.
So moved.
All those in favor? Fred Camillo's a yes.
Lauren Raven, yes.
Janet Stone McWhiggin, yes.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that. Appointments or nominations?
Yes, we have one, and I wish Nancy was still here. So, I motion that we nominate Nancy Chapin as a returning member of the Board of Parks and Recreation, position R4, for a term expiring June 30, 2028.
Janet Stone McWhiggin, I very enthusiastically second.
All those in favor, Fred Camillo is a yes.
Lauren Raven, yes.
Janet Stone McWhiggin, yes.
Thank you. God bless you. Look forward to continuing to have Nancy serve with everybody. Okay, seeing no other businesses, there are?
Sorry, there was a public comment, there, well, Ernst Schirmer wanted to thank everyone who worked on Pomerance.
Oh, okay. I think I sent an email, right?
He did.
And you, and you replied.
I did reply.
Did reply, but he, he had sent it to us, saying that he wanted to enter it.
Into the public.
Did I look to respond late at night? I may have forgot.
Well, hold on. Yeah, you responded at like 9:30. I can pull it up.
Here it is, I've got it.
You got it?
Yeah. No, I just wanted, I just wanted, I want to be appropriately appreciative. Ernst says, I wish to express a very sincere thank you to all those involved for their hard work and dedication to achieve a formal authorization, ultimately all RTM, that the town-owned Pomerance and Tuckman lands be protected from any sort of development, and are to remain 100% public accessories for all of our residents. I would appreciate it if all three of you as Board of Select persons would please very strongly support this proposal in the first and upcoming second BOS reading. Thank you so much for this and your continuing hard work in public service.
Very nice.
Yes.
Thank, thank you for reading that, Janet.